Good evening. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty P. M. for closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Item, item three, Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, we have two items for closed session. One is conference real property negotiator, and under discussion is two thousand acre feet of groundwater. Negotiators myself and Steve Lenten, Bellflower Somerset Mutual Water Company. And the second item is conference real property negotiator. The address is eight eight three three Cedar Street, Bellflower, California. Negotiators myself and Vicki Dewey, Senior Property Manager, Meltdown Management, Price and Terms of Payment.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any conflicts on these two items?
Mister Mayor, I am out on three B because I have property nearby the project.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops refusing himself on item three B. I see no one in the audience, so there being none, if we speak on these items, we will now recess to closed session. All right. Good evening, everyone. The regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council is called to order on Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P. M. Back to open session. We are reconvening from the, from the closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken during the closed session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Dan Coops, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by PJ Melena, our Director of Parks and Recreation Department. Please rise.
Please bow your heads with me. Our gracious heavenly Father, we want to thank you for your many abundant blessings to us. Thank you for life itself. Thank for the measure of health and sustenance, and for the friendships that you provide. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of being appropriate responsibilities. Grant that our mayor and council have ears to listen to the people we serve and the wisdom to act judiciously. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, PJ. City Council announcements, let me start off. The twenty twenty-three Bellflower State of the City presentation will be held on Thursday, October fifth, twenty twenty-three, at eleven thirty A. M. at the Main Event Center. The State of the City presentation provides an overview and update on the city's recent accomplishments and future goals. I'm excited to share the amazing progress that we've had this past year and what is to come. For more information regarding the event and how, and how to purchase tickets, please call five six two eight zero four one four two four, extension two two six seven. Councilmember Ray Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. The city recently partnered with a company, Carisol Ace, to provide mental health support services to Bellflower residents. Carisol Ace is, offers twenty-four-seven streamlined communication and coordination promptly to connect and visuals with the right resources and appropriate care. Available twenty-four hours a day and all year long. Carisol Ace provides assistance to over two hundred languages, ensuring inclusivity and accessibility for all residents. For more information, please visit their website at carisolace.com forward slash California Bellflower. Or call eight 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 five fifteen seventy-eight eighty-one. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Ray, Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to join their next monthly morning mingle. It'll take place tomorrow morning, Tuesday morning, August twenty-ninth, from nine till ten. And for more information, please call Bellflower Chamber of Commerce, and they can be found at five six two eight six seven one seven four four. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The city of Bellflower is thrilled to announce the creation of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This park planning effort will provide a modern vision for the parks and recreation system in Bellflower. The plan will provide guidance for future improvements and the development of new parks, recreational facilities, and programs. The city is committed to making the planning process a collaborative effort and wishes to engage the community through a ser, series of public workshops, surveys, online maps, and other meetings to gather feedback for the plan. For more information, please visit W. W. dot bellflowerparksplan dot com. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. Item number ten, public comments. Mister Stewart?
This is a time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Okay, if you want to speak on any item other than those in the agenda, please sign up and state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name's Chrissy Vidia Bricky. I'm a resident on Maple Street. And I was wondering if you guys would consider opening up the Zoom option for meetings again, like we did during COVID. As you can see, my hands are busy. But one of our favorite things during COVID was we would cook dinner, and we would turn on the council meeting and watch it. And it was really fun as a parent to kind of show our kids, like, hey, this is where, like, decisions are being made. But like, it's right in the middle of bedtime. And so I would love to come to more meetings, but it's hard as a parent to get out here. So just wondering if that's something that you guys would consider looking into again? Whoa, as you could tell, it's a little bit distracting having the kids actually in the room here, so. Is there somebody I could follow up with that request later? Or is that? Okay, you can't reply. Okay, I'll follow up with you guys later. Thank you.
I don't want to interrupt. I want to give you.
Thank you.
I don't want to interrupt you because I want to give you your full three minutes.
Okay, my, I'm done, I'm done with my time. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I don't want to shortchange anyone, okay? All right, we'll start and look into it. All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving along. Item thirteen A, Mister Stewart?
This is consideration possible action to select a council member to serve as mayor pro temp for the term ending December twenty twenty-three. I think the city clerk is going to make a brief presentation.
I can do a brief verbal presentation before the nomination process. On August eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Mayor Pro Tem Raymond Y. Hamada submitted a letter resigning his position on the Bellflower City Council effective August fourteenth. This creates the need for the city council to select a new mayor pro temp to complete the term ending December twenty twenty-three, when the next city council reorganization is scheduled.
All right. Any questions from the council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I open the nomination for mayor pro temp.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dan Coops.
I second the nomination. Are there any other nominations? There being none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. Can we take a couple of minutes to rearrange the seats? Oh, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Coops.
Oh, thank you, Mister Mayor. So you want to sit in the parking lot? What are you gonna do?
Minister? All right. All right, thank you so much. Mister Coops, you want to say anything? The floor is yours.
No, I appreciate your confidence in me, and we've got a great mayor, and I'll do my best to back him up. And it's just an honor and a privilege to be a part of this group. And we've got a lot of great things that we've accomplished in the past and will continue to do. And I just want to thank you collectively and individually that you apparently like my work and are gonna let me do it a little longer. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, item thirteen B, Mister Stewart?
Yeah, this is related to the last item somewhat. This is consideration possible action to provide direction to staff regarding the city council vacancy. And as you know, Mister Hamada submitted his resignation on August eleventh and resigning himself from the position on the council. The council has several options. They can do this. The options are spelled out in the staff report. Succinctly, the council has the option to appoint. The appointment, if they make the appointment, would be good through the election in November twenty twenty-four. If the council chooses not to appoint, they'd have to have a mandatory election in March of twenty twenty-four. That would be just a short-term election for several months until the next election in November. So the staff has provided the options for the council to fill the seat, and the recommendations are as followed. Prepare the necessary documents to call a special election on March twenty-four, twenty-four to fill the council seat, or establish a process to appoint a resident from Council District One of the city to serve as a council member for the term ending in December twenty twenty-four. And three, let's see, you got the action, yeah, we have the, the application packet there to do that if necessary, or three, obviously, to alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. So there's several options for the council. There's several ways we can go. And I think we've spelled out the processes we've taken in the past and what's recommended going forward in the future, and it's really up to the council which, which direction they want to take.
Okay, thanks for the report. And I, I think the way I would like to handle this is just kind of go to your recommendation, recommendations. And so number one is, does anyone from the council want to have a special election? I think let's.
I do not. What's a, what's a special election cost above one hundred and fifty thousand now?
In this, I just want to go line by line here, so the cost about.
That'd be a no.
The estimates we received from the county at this time for the March, for a special election in March would be fifty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six. A special election in November, which is our standard election cycle, would be thirty-five thousand and twelve dollars ninety-one cents.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
I would prefer not to spend that money and have an election.
Very good. Councilmember Sanchez?
I agree. I think that'd be wise, not to spend that money.
So that's settled. No special election, so we're gonna go for an appointment. All right, the process now is, if I recall, going back to our history of appointments in the past, the last two appointments, if I recall, to, correctly, I went wrong, city clerk, two thousand sixteen. What we did is we formed two subcommittees. And fortunately, Councilmember Scott Larson was still in the dais back then. And then after that, in two thousand eighteen, when Councilmember Snablinger passed away, we formed a, one subcommittee at that point. And then the subcommittee made a selection, made a recommend, made a recommendation to the rest of the council, and the selection was basically ratified or confirmed or accepted by the whole council. Is my recollection accurate?
That's right.
All right, so I, I think based on that, I would, I would say that we either had a choice of two subcommittees or one subcommittee at this point. Any, any thoughts?
My thought would just, it worked well last time, and I would say one subcommittee.
One subcommittee?
I would agree with that.
One?
One subcommittee.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I lean to the, the, for, uh, two subcommittees because we can't meet in quorum. Or, so how would that work? So do, does a subcommittee, if there's only one, do they interview all the applicants and then they make a recommendation?
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Do we, do the members that aren't on that committee get to actually interview those applicants as well?
The members of the subcommittee interviewed all the applicants.
Only?
Only, only two.
And then the finalists, only one finalist comes to?
No, multiple final, it could be multiple ones.
Yeah, it could be.
Oh, okay.
It won't be just one person?
Got it.
Yeah.
So you're vetting them and bringing the top?
Right.
Three, top, whatever it may be?
Well, the last time we just brought one top candidate, and that was.
Councilmember Hamada.
Councilmember Hamada. And then the rest of the council agreed with his election, and then, so he was appointed by the whole council.
But I would like to see more than one brought forward from the committee. It'd be my preference. I'd like for the whole council to have a little more input. But I understand about the committee deal because we can't have four people meeting and interviewing anybody without a spotlight in the room.
Right, exactly.
So we gotta have a committee.
And, and the difference this time is there's no fifth member anymore to break the tie. Because remember, the agony we had when it was a two-two, because you were a part of that.
Right.
I know.
Don't remind you.
I was part of that.
All of us were part of that somehow.
Absolutely.
It was agonizing, but there was a tiebreaker. But this time we don't have a tiebreaker.
That's one word to use, yeah. Um, I mean, I would vote in favor of the two subcommittees. I'd like to get a little bit into the process. It's my first time doing it, so, but that's where I would stand. That's just my opinion at this point.
Okay, well, take it. I, I, because of what, because of what we experienced in the last two appointments, and also mainly for the lack of the fifth member to break the tie, then I don't want to have an impasse. So I'm, I'm opting for the, just one sub, one subcommittee. All right, that being said.
We want us to, we've already voted one. I want one subcommittee.
Yeah, one. So basically, we have one subcommittee.
I agree.
In terms of, I want, I'm very cognizant about Council, Mayor Pro Tem Coops request to have more than one finalist to be presented to the rest of the council. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I get what Victor's saying too, but I want, I don't want the committee just to deliver one person, say, there you go. I want all of us to be able to have some choices. And I think if we don't go with two subcommittees, at least we're allowing that to occur.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, from the first option, I feel like you get an opportunity. And I remember, I was one of the applicants, right? You get to have a better conversation in those subcommittees you get to actually have. And then I remember the, the process for Hamada, as he would talk to me through that. You know, you don't get that dialogue. So you're just gonna, you know, so that's the difference there. So you're gonna get, to Councilmember Coops's point right now, the one committee, as long as we're seeing multiple applicants and we're gonna have the opportunity to interview them, I'm okay with that, too. So I, I just want to be able to have, you know, we should be able to have a chance to have a conversation with the applicants.
I think what we can do is, once we, well, once we form a subcommittee, the subcommittee can interview all the candidates, all the applicants, and then bring forward the top candidate, whatever it is, whatever the magic number is. Because sometimes it's hard to say, we have, we have to bring top three, and what if there's only top two?
Right.
Okay?
Right, yeah.
But we'll bring the best, the best candidate, the best candidate, whatever the number is. Could be four, could be two, could be three. So we're not locked in in terms of a number. And then we'll have the opportunity to ask questions publicly. Okay?
Yeah, and I made an inquiry with the city clerk today that whether, hopefully, we'll get some very fine applicants for this position. But if we feel as though there isn't anybody that's a good fit, we need not make a selection from that, and we can extend the time to receive more applications.
I think it's very clear that we don't have to appoint. I think it's very clear in the, in the, in the staff report. We don't need to, we don't have to appoint.
Correct, but we have, how many, maybe the city clerk can tell us, how many days are, we're working on a clock here? Are we, do we have the full sixty days, or we burned through some of them already?
The sixtieth day, I believe, is October thirteenth to make a decision whether to appoint someone to the position.
All right.
That's the drop, drop date that somebody has to be appointed by.
There are timeframes built into this. Right now, we tentatively have scheduled through the timeframe to get an appointment by October thirteenth. We have an application process that goes out with the return date of Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three, at five P. M. Pretty tight timeframe to get, to get the word out, get applications in. But that, if we get the applications in, that means there's plenty of time to review the application, schedule the meetings, and get it to the council for an appointment before October thirteenth.
And, and Mister Mayor, if I may, if you don't appoint by October thirteenth, by law, you have to have a special meeting in March.
Special election.
Special election.
Right, sorry, right.
Okay.
So to, to make that thirteenth, we're recommending you hold to the, the specifically tight timeframes that are specified in the application process and exhibit A of this, of the staff report.
So the deadline to submit applications would be September fifth, which is about a week from today?
Wow.
Or less than a week?
A week from today is the Labor Day holiday, so it is the following Tuesday.
So it's more than a week? Oh, so it's more than a week. Okay, that's plenty of time.
Going forward, right.
Okay.
I don't think there's enough time. That's just my opinion.
For applicants?
For applicants, I'd like to see it go a little longer, but I'm concerned that it would impact whether or not the, the staff can put together the necessary.
How much further? I mean, we could push it out to that Friday.
I'd like to have, see another week at least.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
Because it's really minimal.
It's a holiday week, people are gone.
We could do that. It will tighten the timeframes, but then we're probably gonna have, well, we, we can do that. We can make that work.
Well, I want to.
Whoever's the ad hoc committee have to work harder, faster.
It's, it's just gonna compress the timeframes.
But I, I think it's incumbent on us to be able to have as many applicants come forward as, and that's not very long.
Are you suggesting the twelfth then? Is that what you're thinking?
That would be seven days on top of the five, yeah.
That should be, that should be plenty of time.
Then that's plenty of time, and if you want to do some amendment between the two, but I just felt as though the fifth was kind of abbreviated.
Yeah, it is. It definitely is, yeah. And that's sort of the plan, but we want to give you that option.
What do you think, Victor?
No, I understand that. I would, well, I'll say that knowing that information, knowing that we have such a hard deadline, I understand the, the need for just one committee. As long as we have reserved the right to interview those top candidates, like Mister Coops mentioned, or Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, I think that would be wise for us to do, since we do have a hard deadline. I'm okay with that.
So that will give them more than two weeks, right, to apply, starting from tonight?
Mister Mayor, if I may ask a quick question of the city clerk. Do the applicants have to get signatures, meet a requirement?
Good question.
And the process that was outlined in the staff report, they do not. We have done that in the past. But this time, because of the time.
That in the two thousand and sixteen?
We did, in sixteen and two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, it seemed like. Do, I'm sorry. It seemed like for the tight timeframes, it would be tough to, to, to make candidates that were interested to do that. It would just, it'd probably quell the interest in that. We didn't want to do that.
And also, I think it's very close to the next election anyway.
Yeah.
So.
I'm glad that's bypassed because that could take a week to get thirty signatures, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because the election is gonna be twenty twenty-four anyway, so.
Mister Mayor, I have a question for city attorney and, I guess, city manager. Is there a specific protocol that we must follow, or can we make amendments?
There's no, there's no legal requirement for how to appoint. Just, the law just says appoint.
Okay. Would it be possible that? Oh, I guess, I don't know if this would make sense, but just an idea. I'm just kind of coming out the cuffs here. Is it, would it be possible to have all the applicants begin with a present, like, not a presentation, but like a, an introduction and a speech before they go to the subcommittee?
How will that work?
At a, well, it would be at a council meeting, right, or a special meeting? Just. And it also depends if there's even that many applicants, kind of like an introduction.
Well, I, I, I think it will just add more to the timeline. At the same time, you're, you're kind of taking away part of the job of the subcommittee.
Oh, fair enough.
To initially screen it.
Fair enough. That's a good point. Like I said, it's a out-of-the-cuffs kind of a idea.
I know, I know.
All right.
We're always adjusting here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess they would do that at the end anyways, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I would say that let the subcommittee do their work.
Okay.
And then with a final blessing from the rest of the council.
Mister Mayor, we need to impress on, we haven't mentioned that Mister Hamada was from District One, and that's the source for our new.
Right, I think it's very clear.
It's not a whole-town applicant.
Yeah, it's very clear in the application process.
I mean, let's say it on, you know, because people are gonna see this, and they'll say, hey, I'd like to apply. But you gotta be a member of that.
You gotta be District One.
District One.
I think we'll very, very explicit about that.
And District One is on the website.
Yep.
And if we can show the map also of District One in the, on the website?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, anything else that we need to consider?
Subcommittee members.
Okay, all subcommittee members, all right.
I, I'll go for, I, I think the mayor and pro temp, mayor and mayor pro temp should do it because of the fact of the longevity of your service as a council member. And you have the experience and the titles now. That's just my two cents.
I accept that. Yeah, I would accept if you decide you want to go in that direction. I would certainly do it.
Okay. Councilmember Sanchez, any thoughts?
I'd volunteer, but I understand.
Okay. Because the last time we did was basically the, the mayor, mayor pro temp was the last.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, it was me and.
Yeah, you and me.
Yeah, you were pro temp, I was mayor, yeah.
You were the mayor? Okay.
Something like that.
All right. Anything else before we? No, any, any other ideas at that, because before we do a motion. So the motion is to appoint one subcommittee. Anything else?
Nah, just saying, trying to remember, trying to remember all this is, is we've done this, this is the fourth time we've done it since I've been on the dais.
Guarding with bomb guards.
That we've had, started with bomb guards, and then Larson, and then Mister Snablinger passed away, and now Hamada.
By re, you didn't appoint on the first one, you appointed on the next two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the first one, we left it open.
You let it roll, yeah.
We waited for the next election.
That's right.
And I should point out, Mister Mayor, members of the council, that the law has changed since then. So you're now required to appoint or have the special election. So it used to be you could just leave the position open until the next municipal election.
Okay, all right, let me just recap what we agreed to. We will be looking for a replacement for a council member for District One only. There enough, right? District One. We will appoint one subcommittee to screen the applicants. And the deadline again for the application is September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. I heard that there's a nomination for the mayor, mayor pro temp to be the members of the subcommittee. And then we will, the subcommittee will bring back the top candidates to the rest of the council. Do we have a date for that meeting? Can we specify the date or, based on the, based on the timeline that we have?
You could, you could schedule a special meeting as necessary.
Oh, we can schedule, okay, all right.
It's not necessary. Well, I think I'd let the timeframe play out, see how it works with the interviews.
So we have the flexibility to do it. Okay, did that capture all the things that we need to do?
And Mister Mayor, we approve the application that has been submitted by staff.
Yeah, based on the.
That the content of that is correct?
Yes, the application process in exhibit A.
And you agree on the September twelfth deadline?
September twelfth deadline. Okay, so I need a motion to approve all these things that we kind of enumerated during our discussion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion then.
Mister Mayor, just one more question. For staff, what, what, what will be our efforts in communicating this out to the public of District One? Besides, obviously, posting it?
Posting the website?
Yes, so what we've done in the past is post at all of our posting locations, which are all the parks, the library here in City Hall, and also on the city's website.
And I, I think the most important thing is, if you know of someone in District One, encourage them to apply. Yeah, anyone, anyone here, anyone in the TV land, if you know someone in District One whom you think is qualified, who can serve the city council well, encourage them to apply.
And be a registered voter?
Yeah, of course.
Well, you gotta tell it, you know?
Registered voter in District and living in District One.
domicile in District One.
You gotta live there. You can't just own a home there. You gotta live there.
You have to be a registered voter because you will be verified by the city clerk.
That is correct. We'll be checking voter registration.
Yes, exactly. All right.
Want to continue with the motion?
Yes.
Make a motion, motion that we appoint through the process of the city clerk's office with an application to all available residents within District One regarding the dates as discussed from tomorrow to what's September twelfth. His applications are due by September twelfth with the ad hoc committee of Mayor Coops, I mean, Mayor Santinas and, and Pro Tem, Mayor is Coops. What else I leave out?
And we'll, the subcommittee will select the top candidates?
The subcommittee will, will select from the applicants the top candidates, which could be one to multiple, and bring them before the dais for discussion.
I second the motion.
All right, motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Coops to follow the process that we discussed, to replace Mayor Pro Tem Hamada as his, in his seat as council member. Mayor Protem Hamada as his, initiate as council member. Yes, that was in the motion.
Includes the appointment of the two, okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Santinez.
Aye. All right, thank you so much. That was a big, big task. All right, uh, next item, item thirteen C, Mr. Stewart.
It's a participation day for the city council. I've yet another subcommittee recommendation, this is action agreed, to, to councilmember ad hocs committee to review and consider the agreement extension options with the city's solid waste management services provider, C R and R Incorporated. And the usual provisos apply there. It's a matter of the council selecting two among themselves to serve on that ad hoc subcommittee.
Had we had a subcommittee before to deal with the same issue?
Uh, we didn't, we didn't find anything in our records to indicate that we had, uh, created a subcommittee before.
So this is a very new one, huh?
When we redid the franchise fees, I know I was a little bit of a cheerleader on that, and I did it through Public Works, just trying to ask questions and whatever when I came back. Kinda was, why, I was, you know, I was just ask, asking for justification of, of fees.
Oh, I see, okay.
Pretty much what I was doing is, but there was not an ad hoc committee.
Okay, um.
I would, I have interest in this, only because that I've, have some ideas of how we can do bulky item pickup better. And some of the, oh, I guess I should say, shortfalls that the, we have some, I'll go back into what I preach, is our, City of Bellflower's industry is rentals and apartments and such things like that. And it seems to be on the first of the month, all that stuff, when somebody moves, a leftover gets put on the curb. Sometimes it's there for up to a week or longer, because just the chance that staff doesn't drive by it, or the, or the good neighbor, there's not a good neighbor that calls it in, it gets missed. And it makes our town kinda look junky, because we have more of that than any other city, city that I can tell. And I would like to work with a trash company in reviewing this to find a way to do it better. And, uh, I would like to think that, you know, we have a great graffiti department that nobody complains about. It sure would be nice if we had the, the big item garbage off the public parkway in a timely manner. I don't know, it's just one of my pet bees, and I think we all have been in that fight. I'm not alone, I'm sure, with your ideas, but that's what I'm singing to.
Okay.
I'd offer my services to serve on that if need be, on the C R and R committee.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Sanchez, you okay? All right, all right, so I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Mayor Protem Koops and Councilmember Denton to be in the, uh, what do you call this, uh, ad hoc subcommittee on solid waste management services provider.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, seconded by, uh, Mayor Protem Koops to appoint Mayor Protem Koops and Councilmember, uh, Denton to this subcommittee. Roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Santinez.
Aye. Item thirteen D, Mr. Stewart.
Keeping with the theme, this is consideration of possible action, appoint two members of the city council to review and consider requests from Dr. Du, Dr. Sue Alisson, to form a Bellflower Citizens Advisory Commission on Disability. Um, August fourth, I received an email from Dr. Alisson, we all know her as a member of the Bellflower School District, Unified School District, and as a, as a local citizen, has been, uh, advocating for disability access for quite some time. She is on the California Commission for Disability Access. She's requested the city council create a local commission to discuss such things. And, uh, we don't know much about this. The recommendation today, I think, is to set up a city council's ad hoc subcommittee of two persons to sit with Dr. Sue Alisson and find out, uh, what she has recommending, and see if there's anything we can do to help us just on that front. We take nominations from the council on who they want to appoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, any interest? I'm interested.
Since this is in my wheelhouse, you know I'm interested.
Okay.
No, I think, uh, Victor would make a great addition, because in one of his previous lives, that was, uh, his occupation, so.
Okay, very good.
Really? Well, when he worked with Salem all those years, I.
Oh, I guess so, yeah, he would saw that, how it have to, yeah.
He knows the rules and regulations on what's good and what isn't, so I think that'd be a wonderful asset. So that'd be my recommendation, if he's in for it.
Okay, you have to, to have shown interest?
All right, we'll, uh, make a motion, we'll approve it.
Make the motion.
I'll second that.
I second the motion to, uh, approve, uh, mayor and.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Sanchez as our new committee for improving our handicap situation.
I'll second that too.
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion by council, Mayor Protem Koops, seconded by Councilmember Denton to appoint, uh, myself and Councilmember Sanchez on this subcommittee on advisory commission on disability. Roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Santinez.
Aye. All right, we're now down to the consent calendar. Uh, I think this is the first time it happened, that there's an item on the, on the consent calendar. Item fourteen G, where all the council members, members of the council are conflicted. So, what we need to do is select three to join the, to be in the, to be, to participate in discussion, or select one who will not participate in the discussion, okay? I'm giving you two choices.
Yeah.
Uh, city clerk, what is your, what is your call?
Do we wanna pull that one first, consider that separate, you wanna vote on the rest of it, and pull what, the items, pull now and then vote on that one separately? How do you wanna do it? Doesn't matter?
I don't think we need to pull it. It's not controversial. It's, the item on the agenda for fourteen G is for the resiliery of a lot of streets in the city. We happen to live closer to the street than, we have to recuse ourselves, within five hundred feet. And this is all over the city, that's why. All right.
I'll volunteer, if you want, and make it easier.
No.
No? You have to pull, okay, got it, all right.
So what's your, to choose one who will not participate, or choose three who will participate?
Um, I'm prepared to choose one who will not participate.
You're so efficient, yeah, all right.
That's very efficient.
All right, choose one.
Okay, so, um, I will show, um, the slips of paper that we're using in our clear bowl here for the random process. So this is Councilmember Denton that will not participate.
Got my way after all.
Your wish was granted.
No, not yet, I have to put them in the bowl.
Oh, you have to put them in the bowl, oh, okay, I thought you were picking them, you were showing the winner.
I have to, I have to show them as I put them in, so you know it's all fair. Uh, this is, um, Koops.
I never got turned down for volunteering before.
Yeah.
They do not all say Denton. Just making sure. Councilmember Sanchez. He's going in the bowl.
Yeah.
Spelled correctly. And Mayor Santinez.
I cannot see anyway.
I can make them bigger next time. Okay.
All right.
We will shuffle. You wanna shuffle? Shuffle it for me?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
You can't pick your own.
Yeah.
And it is Councilmember, well, Mayor Protem Koops will not participate.
Oh.
I'll, I'll look goodbye.
Okay. All right, does anyone want to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number J, or letter J.
Letter J, okay, letter J.
And you, I have a conflict on fourteen G, do you want me to announce it now or later?
Yes, please.
All right, fourteen G, I have a property, um, that, no, not fourteen G, excuse me.
No, we are, we are all conflicted with fourteen G.
I did the wrong letter. It's a letter D, like David.
Letter D. You're, here, you have a conflict.
Fourteen D, I have a conflict, um, that has to do with, uh, Oak Street, and I have property there.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, okay.
And Mayor, also, I have a conflict with fourteen E as in Edward.
Fourteen E, okay.
For a property conflict.
All right. Councilmember Sanchez, any other conflict?
No, sir.
Okay, so, uh, let's talk about item fourteen K, fourteen J.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick question for our finance director, uh, this is regarding the, uh, the operation budget and the transfer over. Uh, so I wanna just kinda get a quick overview, um, on what those items are that we're transferring over from a, from one year over to the next?
Yes, um, those are listed on page seven, um, bottom right-hand numbering system, page seven of the staff report, Exhibit A. The force, first four items are relating to the transfer of funds from the federal COVID funding, ARPA funding. And we're transferring funds to the general fund as well as the Economic Development Fund. Economic Development Fund transfers are one million dollars for, uh, citywide wireless broadband project, specifically the in-house routing or access point units. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for economic developments, business development programs. And then general fund gets reimbursement of costs related to COVID abatement, plus administrative costs of hundred twenty-five thousand. Those total one point three million dollars transferring out of the federal COVID funding to these funds. Um, the last two items relate to the sale of the municipal water system as well as the liquidation of the municipal water system fund, because it's no longer operational. So the, through the sales, we're transferring nine point nine million dollars out of the municipal water system to the public projects fund. And municipal water system at June thirtieth had two point four million dollars in operating cash that was accumulated over the years. So those two transfers total twelve point three million dollars.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out also, all these items were approved in the last budget. This is the follow-up to make the funds transferred that we talked about.
Thank you, thank you, Tay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, um, can I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar? Uh, noting that, um, councilmember, oh, Mayor Protem Koops is recusing himself on item D, and Councilmember Denton on item E, and then on item G, all the councilmembers, um, I have conflicts, but based on the draw, uh, Councilmember Koops is recusing himself. Did I capture it correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move that for you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll, uh, second a motion on consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Denton, seconded by Mayor Protem Koops to approve, uh, the consent calendar. Roll call please.
Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Santinez.
Aye. All right, we're moving along council reports. Um, Councilmember Denton.
I don't got anything tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Mayor Protem Koops.
I'm in the same boat. I have nothing to report. I'll give my time to Mr. Sanchez.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanna thank staff for their, um, their efforts and their work during the, uh, the storm and the preparation. Um, and I know you yourself, Mr. Mayor, was also, uh, very accessible and, um, and informing the public on, on where they can go and get sand from us and stuff like that, so just wanna thank staff. I know that was last minute, and, uh, without the staff, we can't do anything, so just wanna say that. And then, uh, lastly, I'll congratulate, uh, Mayor Protem Koops, um, on his, uh, position, and looking forward to another good year.
All right, thank you. Just, just a couple of announcements. I wanna thank, uh, first of all, I wanna thank the Bellflower Symphony Orchestra for a wonderful concert on August the nineteenth at the Town Center Plaza. It was well attended, and, uh, it was fantastic music. If you missed that, you missed a good concert. Uh, basically, um, it was a combination of the regular, um, symphony orchestra plus a lot of, um, guest, um, musicians from the Cypress College, that was brought about by one of their professors. So it was, they really played, uh, good music, and congratulations to two new businesses in Bellflower, the Five Six Two E-Bikes and, uh, Pit Stop Barber Shop on both on Alondra Boulevard. And just today, I, I visited again the, the Butterfly Garden. I'm very excited, uh, about the construction of this garden. I think this is gonna be a welcome addition, uh, to the city of Bellflower. So with that, um, I'd like to adjourn the, this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council uh, on five thirty P M on Monday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Oh, one more thing before you adjourn, uh, we're going back to Business Suit at the next meeting.
I sold mine. I, do I need to get it?
I can, I can sell you one from, from, uh, Salvation Army. I bought one, I have extra one.
I just need the top half.
Okay, all right, so.
I thought it was after Labor Day.
Yeah, what happened to Labor Day? Is that before Labor Day?
That's after.
Okay, I didn't look at the calendar.
Oh, after Labor Day, okay, next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, come on.
August is gone already.
Exactly.
What happened to August, yeah.
So we'll be adjourned to the next meeting on Monday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is now adjourned.
Can't we do Thanksgiving?
Time just flew by.
Yeah.